What time you got?
Four thirty.
Alright. Alright, folks, it is four thirty. I'd like to call the meeting into order, please.
Gavel, please.
Please. Folks, thank you. Uh, for public information, the cop the Open Meetings Act is on the east wall of Commissioner's Room. Roll call, please.
I have a question. Do we need to announce, uh, Commissioner Knapper?
We'll just, we'll just put him down as absent, excused absent.
Okay, but he is participating in conversation? So is he absent or participating, non-voting member? I don't...
Uh, yes.
Okay. Meyer?
Here.
Harris?
Here.
Knapper? Reizig?
Here.
Blue?
Here.
Okay, can we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Okay, do we, we, I understand we do have a change in the agenda. Kelly, I'll start with you.
Okay, under general agenda items, I am removing, uh, the letter of support for broadband projects, moving it to March fourth for, uh, Netlinks Internet.
Okay. Are there any other changes? Board, do you have any changes or additions? Anybody? If not, I'll entertain a motion for approval as amended.
I move that we approve the agenda as amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Record your votes, please.
Four yeses?
Okay, thank you. Right, remind everybody that the board does reserve the right to go into executive session at any time that we feel that we need to, uh, under the Open Meetings Act. At this time, we do have an executive session, uh, personnel issue at the end of the meeting. Move on to the consent agenda. Anybody like anything, anybody, anything removed from the consent agenda? Yes, Kelly?
I would like to make mention, um, Lisa, do you have any idea how much it went up? The preapproval that was in your packet initially has gone up from in the, the two-hundred-and-ninety-seven part to three, what'd I say, fourteen? It changed slightly. I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Your paper copy is in front of you and I have it available for your viewing, but it did change.
Alright, thank you. Any other changes or additions? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Is there any discussion? Record your votes, please.
Four yeses?
Yes.
Good.
Thank you. Uh, move into, uh, Board of Equalization. Need a motion, please?
I move we, move into the Board of Equalization.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Record your votes.
Four yeses?
Yes. Thank you. Alright, first item, uh, is receive the tax list corrections. We've all had an opportunity to look at those. Entertain a motion for approval.
I move that we approve the, uh, tax list corrections.
Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Any discussion? Record your votes, please. I think mine went. There it did, okay. Alrighty, thank you. Uh, next item, discuss considered dates for the protest hearings. Which one? Both? Well, I, I think we kinda worked it around a bit. Uh, at the last meeting, we had some reasons not to go too early because of, uh, I think it was Oregon Trail Days. I think that was, uh, one of the issues. And the next one was the mapping department was going to be gone on the week of the fifteenth. Is that correct? Okay, so we're looking like the week of the eighth, possibly. Well, and then the second week, twenty-second, it was, uh...
We're getting too close to the deadline.
We're getting too close to the deadline, so we weren't gonna have enough time to get it done. So I, I, I don't know if there's much discussion. Looks like, looks like the week of the eighth is about the only thing that's available. Yes, Ashley?
If you guys happen to go while we're gone, um, I will be still, I will still be available, email and I mean, they call me like, there is something that you guys need.
I, I think you're pretty important to have here when I have.
I mean, either way, if, I, I will be available while we're gone.
I think, I, I, I think your presence is, is very valuable during protests. I some, at least somebody from the office, so. That's my opinion. I don't know how everybody else feels. Uh, you, you've been, you've been very helpful in the years past and I, I can't see that that's gonna change, so. Okay, so it looks, it looks like we're looking at the week of the eighth.
And that will be, I think you just said during Oregon Trail Days. That will be.
Well, I, I don't know that we have a choice.
Yeah, I, it doesn't bother me, but I'm just, you mentioned it, so that's why I...
Yeah.
We probably could, should consider contingency plan depending on the volume of protests.
Well, yeah, the, the Saturday or whatever, even to move into the next week if necessary, if that's what we have to do. And you guys are gonna be gone again? When, Ashley, the fifteenth?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, we will fly out that Sunday, four through four, ten, and we'll be back Friday.
Okay, that may be the one that we get you on the phone or something to, to, to get something done.
Um, I'll be available, available, you know, off my laptop and still we get the motion.
Okay. Alright, sounds good.
Do we have any sense of, I mean, I know, we don't know how many is gonna protest. I'm gonna say less than last year, hopefully.
Hopefully.
Yeah, um, but what...
That's a request. How's that?
What did we have last year? Was it ten days total or something like that?
I don't know how many days. Kelly, you...
I thought it was almost two weeks.
It was, uh, it was close to two weeks.
Yeah, the nine-hour, nine-hour, or twelve-hour days.
We did seven days, twelve-hour days.
Yeah. And then it, then we had Saturday, we did Saturday and then I think we came back, did it come back Monday?
Yeah, we did seven full days.
So I think we had eight, maybe eight full days, the full week plus some following Monday?
Well, it was only seven days a week. We didn't work Sunday, so we have six in one or seven.
Okay, but I thought we came back on Monday.
I did, I'm sure we did. We didn't work Sunday, so that would be Sunday.
Hopefully, you're not as many, but...
Right.
We're, we're meeting with, uh...
It is what it is, yeah.
The preliminary plan is that we're meeting with Mark Luce and Sarah Scott to, um, go over where our figures are and see what we need to do to pass the Turk requirement, so we don't get, you know, them coming in and adjusting our figures.
We always get threatened with that. We haven't had to do it yet, so far.
And I don't think we wanna go down that route.
I don't think so either.
So, you know.
I think we've always done, when I say we, the, the county and the assessor's office has done.
They're gonna work with us to see what we can get done.
Okay.
We'll know, have a better idea maybe early next week.
I, I, I think these guys are gonna settle a lot more issues than we had last year because I think they know what, they know what issues are now.
Would, could, could we do this, Gene and, and Robert? When you come up with some solutions, I guess, can you get them, or can we talk about that at, at meetings prior to that July meeting? Or July protests?
When you, when you...
Well, as far as before, before you send all the cards out on what, what we're, what you're thinking of or whatever.
Well, we have to have values set by March nineteenth.
Oh, so we don't have a whole lot of time then? Okay, alright.
We send out changing value cards by June first.
Okay, gotcha, gotcha.
Would it be appropriate for us to declare that, um, the week of the eighth, eighth through the Friday, the twelfth, or, no, I'm looking at the wrong one, sorry.
No, you're right. Eighth through the twelfth of July.
So the eighth through the twelfth and then contingency fifteenth through the eighteenth or something like that.
Yeah, I, I could do that.
I mean, then at least we know.
I think that'd be a lot of fun if they had to.
Right.
We'd have help, we'd have to be...
We could even, yeah, work in the Saturday if we had to.
I guess I, I guess I would defer to Kelly.
I was gonna say, one thing we need to remember is we were not going to specify hearing dates on the postcard.
No.
We're never doing that again, so we have to be done by the twenty-fifth. So if, just if she says July, the month of July, the first through the twenty-fifth, we can pick whatever day we end up needing. They'll be, I'll be scheduling them in my office.
Yeah, so that's, that's when they'll know when, whatever the issue is.
Yeah, we're not...
I understand.
Our crunch was we had actually specified the dates and that was the prob, I mean, just because we'd always done it that way.
I think we try to just say, we're gonna commit to the week of the eighth and leave that for Kelly's staff to schedule and then depending on the volume, we can go into the following week.
Yeah, right, as a contingency.
But you won't have it on the postcard to be locked in.
We're not gonna put that on the postcard. They'll just find that out when they come to file the protest.
As they schedule.
I like that.
It'll be fine.
But we can mark it on our calendars.
As the eighth.
The week of the eighth.
The week of the eighth.
Maybe through the fifteenth or so.
No, no fishing trips.
Right, and I think that's what we need.
What's that all about?
For your staff, us, so that everybody kinda knows what's what.
Or bring your cots here. Spend the night, yeah. Okay, I would entertain a motion then that, uh, protest twenty-twenty, twenty, twenty-four protest, uh, would be during the week of eighth of July.
Tentatively.
Tentatively, tentatively.
And as far out as necessary.
Right.
Got it?
I'm okay with that then.
See it.
Did you say that as a motion?
I just entertained the motion. I didn't ask for it.
You suggested that motion.
I suggested that motion.
I'll move that suggested motion.
Okay. Thank you, Mark. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion? Uh, record your votes, please. Okay.
Russ, will you try it one more time? Thank you.
Alright, I need a motion to come out of Board of Equalization, please.
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
Hold, just a second.
Sorry?
Okay.
Okay, record your votes, please. I didn't, mine didn't go. There it is. Okay. Are we clear, Kelly?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Alright, uh, road and bridge. Mr. Baird, how are you tonight? We're going to discuss a consider awarding a bid of Highland Road Project, C seventy-nine, four thirty-three.
Yes, this is part of our one-year projects. Put it out for bid, received only one bid from sign of construction. Uh, the engineer estimate for the project was eight-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand. Um, I had budgeted, budgeted eight-hundred-and-fifty thousand for it. Uh, the original quote committed just under a million, nine-hundred-and-ninety-nine thousand, six hundred. So after that, we, uh, Baker and myself, we talked with Steve Spatpek, the Simons did some negotiating on their bid. Uh, we're gonna have to be a little more involved with the project. Uh, we're gonna be in charge of traffic control and flagging and a little more involved than we're...
Does that bring the number down a bit, then, Steve?
Yeah, so it brings the bid down to eight-fifty-six, eight-hundred-and-fifty-six thousand.
Okay.
And that's gonna put us just thirty thousand over.
Simon, yes. So that puts us, you know, at six-thousand eighty dollars over the eight-fifty we had budgeted. But I have that six thousand in that other little weird...
Did a lot, you did a lot of sweet talking to them, did you, Steve?
He must've done some arm rounds, too.
Well, that's good.
So, like I said, it's, they're planning on about three weeks. It'll start about April first.
Is there any reason that was the only bid that we got? Did anybody else offer any explanations?
I think the only one that would've bid it would've been Warner and I think they were waiting to see if they had any state projects out there before they did it.
Okay.
It's his fault, right?
Yes.
Yeah, and usually those are the only, yeah, usually those are the only do that, do that.
They have a bunch of choices.
Okay. Alright.
Actually, you've got that down about a hundred, what, a hundred-and-eighty, a hundred-and-fifty thousand, you lowered it?
Well, just about a hundred-and-fifty thousand down there.
That's pretty good. If we can match some labor to, to that, that's keeping money in the account. That's good.
You're recommending we approve this bid for eight-fifty-six, zero eighty?
Correct.
Zero eighty?
Yes.
And you're okay with that, Russ, and yours, uh, I'd move that we would accept the bid from Simon Contractors on the Highland Road improvements for eight-hundred-and-fifty-six thousand, um, eighty dollars and no cents.
Can I comment or do I need to wait till you make a second?
Well, let's, let's go to the second person.
Okay, I'll, I'll second.
Second, okay, now, we're open for discussion.
Now, did that include all of the feet?
Yes, it includes all, and it includes all two-point-two-seven miles. The original thought was maybe we would reduce the project down within the budgets. We might only do one-point-eight or something, but by us wanting to do a traffic control and that, it's still gonna be the full length of the project, two-point-two-seven.
Yeah, because they, they had an option of two ways. They were gonna shorten the project or help with the project and I didn't, I didn't like the idea to shorten the project. We're gonna do it. We need to get it complete.
That's to the airport corner?
It's gonna go past the airport, uh, corner, and like, there's a canal just past the airport, probably two-hundred yards. It's gonna go past that, probably not another corner.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, record your votes, please.
Okay, four yeses?
Yes, thank you. Uh, next item discussed, consider road and bridge weight limits in use. Steve handed out some material for us.
Yes, maybe a couple items there.
Yes.
Last week I forwarded, uh, emailed to all of you from Kent Miller at Bridge Division. We're gonna start with this. Um, I guess we have a, a situation, we brought this up, is we have a situation north of the Lakewood County Road up here. It was brought to my attention by Sioux County that there was gonna be a big project being hauled at those centers from the factory, they left that road. I don't know if his number's right, but he told me like nine hundred loads. I don't know if that's right. But a guy was in contact with Sioux County and Bucks County apparently about his hauling going on, uh, never contacted us at all. I contacted Troy Brown to see maybe if they could help us, you know, if they're gonna be taking these loads, because there's a twenty-one-ton bridge posted right there about, uh, getting old, to see what his plan was with the twenty-one tons. Troy Brown, last night, seen him here a week ago, I believe it was, and told me, never called him back. Um, so then we go last week. My foreman was up there on this road, just about in that area, near Mount Stone, they had seen an excavator headed that way over the twenty-one-ton bridge and being hauled out by NMC and, uh, shut him off. It's obviously an excavator, it was twenty-one ton. It was gonna be about ninety-five thousand, it's what NMC told me. Turned him around, and then went back to NMC. The guy, um, I don't know, maybe he's here, but, uh, finally gave me a call, wanted to know why we turned this excavator around. Um, I told him, because it's only a twenty-one-ton bridge. I can't give you permission to run fifty tons across this bridge or even forty tons. It's, it's posted as a twenty-one-ton bridge. Kinda left it at that, at that point. I told him we were gonna have a meeting, we're gonna discuss about how we wanted an act or how we're gonna pursue future and besides this one, future, um, weights on roads or traffic on weights for projects like this. Then we need to probably come up with some sort of, uh, an agreement, how we're gonna do this stuff. So that's why I had this put on the agenda. Between then and now, I've done some investigating with the, uh, with Bridge Division and the load rating. You guys have a copy of that load rating sheet? By the load rating sheet, the state has on that bridge, um, it can, it's a twenty-one, thirty-one, forty-four-ton bridge, depending on the type of vehicle that goes across it. And that is on that other picture with trucks on it. You have to classify those trucks. Um, it's my understanding he's using a truck with, uh, side dumps or belly dumps that are triple axles. So that would put it in the S-two category, which is thirty-one ton. So at this rate, um, he hasn't stopped hauling, he's still hauling, so it's not like we took, shut him off. He's still going over it. I don't know how many loads he has up there, but, so it puts him at the thirty-one-ton level. You know, there's kind of a, probably, I suppose, a person could argue he might maybe have a thirty-three classification, because he has six axles, so. All right, probably split pairs, we'll get into that. It's gonna take more people to, to maybe probably figure out how they're gonna classify that, kind of measure up all that, so.
How, how many times do you think this has happened that we don't even know about? I mean, on any, on, on any, on any of our bridges?
Hardest time, it's, it's for you, the hardest time.
Yeah.
So, I just went up there at two o'clock seven a.m. And the road's already, even with the moisture, the road's already tore up. When it dries out, it's really, it's just a sand road that goes to our left. It goes, he's going to like eight miles up into Sioux County, so pivots up there, he's gonna put this on. Of course, it's gonna cost us, cost a major, we're gonna have to be out there twice a week to smooth it out, but if it dries out, you know, it's, it's gonna be, so it's not even gonna drive through our bridge, so. I guess we need to have a, how are we gonna act on this type of stuff? What, so we're all on the same page?
Let, let me ask you. You've got a bridge that's posted for a certain tonnage and, and somebody drives over it anyway and they're over that tonnage. Is there a, is there a fine? I mean, do we have to catch him? I, well, I, I, I guess I'm not quite understanding.
Yeah, you would have, you have to catch him.
You gotta post somebody out there to do that.
Troy Brown got a hold of Carrier Enforcement. Uh, I actually seen him out there, at least they were up driving the road, but now whether or not they're there at the same time,
Yeah.
when he's there is a whole nother thing. Uh, Troy told me they were having deputies, you know, swing out there.
I think I asked you, Stephen, maybe, maybe I did, maybe I just thought I did. What, what, what would be a fine for that if, if...
I, I, it's gonna go by whatever his weight is over the limit, whatever that posted.
A little premature. Did you look at this load limit chart?
Yeah.
Okay, do you see that load limit chart on the semi down there?
Which, which one are you talking about, Russ?
This one right here. This little one right here.
Okay, gotcha.
You see that on the, straight truck is thirty-ton. On a, uh, uh, straight, a semi trailer with one axle is thirty-three ton. You take a split, it's forty-three ton. Those trucks, uh, as long as they're stretched, the state goes by the inner bridge between the rear axle and the front axle of the trailer.
Okay.
So if that cab weighs twenty-ton and he clears that first span, he's into the next span before the second one comes on, so you're not loading that bridge. Each span is supposed to carry twenty-ton. Or else you could not drive a single axle.
You don't have the total weight in one spot all, one time.
Correct. So what I'm saying is each one of those spans gotta carry twenty-ton or you couldn't drive a single axle truck over. It's only go with the first span or you'd have to stop.
Yeah.
That truck will handle twenty-ton on the first span, it'll handle twenty-ton on the second span. So as soon as that, and the bridge's total length is forty-three feet, right?
Forty-six feet, I believe.
Huh? Forty-six?
So, Russ, I'm gonna disagree with Russ on this.
Well, you can, and that's fine.
Because if you read the deal from, uh, Kent Miller, that is for the whole bridge. It doesn't go by span.
It doesn't go by these, yeah.
That rating goes by the whole bridge, the gross vehicle weight, and it goes, that rating is for the whole bridge. It's not by span. It goes by the whole bridge.
Now, I called Mike, Mike at Husker Steel, and Mike builds bridges and he said by the state of Nebraska rule, he has to build each span for twenty-ton. Or else, how you gonna get a twenty-ton truck over? Tell me how you're gonna do it if you, if you can't clear the first span. Is that first span carrying twenty-ton with a single axle truck?
I drive a short box pickup. I, I...
Okay, so, if you had, if you had a truckload of axle, you had a single dump truck and you drive it across the first span, did that carry twenty-ton?
Well, I mean, I, 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 I agree with your theory here.
The second ton, second span, so when they build them for the state of Nebraska, they build them, each span has gotta be equal to that, because you could not take a single axle rated twenty-ton over each span separately. Each span's gotta carry twenty-ton.
So it spreads it out, so you don't have all of that weight, all of that weight on one, on one span.
The semi's gonna weigh forty-ton or eighty, eighty thousand.
Right, right.
A straight truck will weigh forty thousand. It's twenty-ton. So he clears the first span twenty-ton, he goes across the center support, he goes to the second span, he's got twenty-ton on the second span, so tell me how much he's, he's hauling. He's carrying forty-ton. He put on twenty and he put on twenty. And he cleared it, so now...
So he did, he did exceed twenty on any one of the spans.
Neither are the semis. The semi drives the cab across and he's twenty.
How many times is he going over the bridge doing this stuff?
When he clears that first span, he's into the second span before the next set of wheels come on, so he's got twenty on this one or twenty on that.
You know, I'm certainly not a
Yeah.
professional truck person, but if I was approaching that bridge and it said twenty-one ton and my vehicle weighed more than twenty-one ton, I would assume I shouldn't be crossing that bridge. I mean, that's the simple story.
Yeah.
Now, you're saying it's more, that it's more complicated than that.
Well, did you look at this sheet?
I did.
That sheet, when you go to the tri, the semi, you just went to forty-three ton. You see, that's the same bridge, but it went to forty-three ton.
Right, so that, that truck can weigh eighty-six thousand.
Oh, I, I see what you're saying. I, okay, that, that this weight limit with, with, okay, I see.
With combination vehicles.
Lisa?
Okay, so it seems to be a big topic with these solar panels, that we take them a different direction to not damage our road. Is there a different way to send these people? You can't get to Sioux County any other way?
They gotta go clear up, they can go clear up to Alliance, you gotta head west of Alliance out towards Snake Creek and go across that way.
Sounds like a plan.
Or they gotta go up Highway seventy-one and there's a road clear up north, I believe, I was told the Long Church, that they can come down and get to there.
Sounds like a plan.
But they're still doing it. I mean, they're, we're still hauling product there, correct? Okay. Well, I, I agree with you in theory here, I really do.
Well, that's theory's right, 'cause I, I talked to a bridge manufacturer, he told me how he builds them for the state, what their spec is to build them for. And then there's an eighty percent fudge factor on top of that.
Probably the, where it makes a difference is who's writing the tickets. Because if the people writing the tickets, how do they interpret it?
Twenty-ton gross.
It's really, whatever the, the...
We can't take a dump truck over.
If the, if the people writing the tickets are, whatever their way of doing it is, seems to me that, um, that person driving that truck is at risk of getting caught.
The next meeting, I'd like to get that, uh, Steve to do, uh, at least put him out for bids, get a, get some engineering started, that we can run eighty thousand over those, uh, that bridge over there. We need a box covert in there. If we're gonna have people doing commerce here, I don't think we can regulate commerce. This is full-time commerce. This isn't a sol, solar farm. It's gonna be coming in for two or three months and leave. This is people are gonna run every day. They've got cattle up there, we get shifts up there, Larry Rice is up there. All those people, I've talked to them, they all have livestock. They've gotta get feed there, they gotta get cattle home. We've gotta supply, we either gotta supply bridges out, carry it, or we gotta allow them to run over this. And they've been running over this, uh, Craig Carlson at RC Welding told me last week that he ran a ninety-six thousand-pound crane over it three times last month. They went up and moved some stuff. He said, he checks the load rating and, and, you know, he said those bridges are guaranteed for eighty percent over according to the way the state built.
What he's doing is spread out span by span by span.
He was way over, he was way, he was way above what those numbers are. He was, he was illegal, but he went over and then that bridge carried it. He was way over.
So that gets you back to the enforcement. Who's gonna enforce it? How you gonna, how you...
That's what we got. How are we gonna do it? You guys wanna set somebody to every one of our two-span bridges on every canal road? I don't think we can afford it. You guys, you wanna do that?
Well, you called, you said...
That's the biggest thing, is the enforcement, so.
Yeah.
I mean, you can set whatever restrictions you want on whatever road, but if you don't have the enforcement there to do it.
It's not gonna matter.
And this isn't the only bridge. It's like this in this town.
Exactly.
They're everywhere.
We got thirty-eight more anyway.
I'm, I'm guessing most, most of the bridges
So.
out and about are being overloaded daily, probably.
Right, right.
This one happened to come up because there was numerous loads
Right.
all of a sudden.
Right, but if you look at it the way, the way you're explaining it, Russ, I can understand where you don't have that maximum amount in one space at one time.
Correct.
And, and, and I, I, I agree with that, I do.
Because you're putting twenty-ton here and then you're moving twenty-ton to the next span. Well, if it'll do twenty and twenty...
You haven't lied to me yet, so I believe you.
I ain't never lying.
I, I believe what you say, 'cause it makes sense. It really does.
Well, it makes...
How much space?
Well, you can look at it. I mean, it's, here's the state law right here. Look at it. It shows you right here.
How much space is between those spans, Steve?
I think one's twenty-six, I think the other one's like twenty, twenty-four, twenty-two.
Okay, so over, over twenty-foot between
Right.
between each, each, each span.
So.
So you're distributing that weight.
When they do the load rating, they put all those measurements of the bridge and everything that's, the measurements of the girders, the decking, the spacing, the shear points, all that goes in when they do low ratings, into their algorithms on the computer.
And that's an, that's an engineer's number that you're getting drunk, right?
That actually comes from Federal Highway and Ashco's for how that happens.
Gotcha, okay.
Who put that limit on that bridge?
Well, the, the county must have, the state, that's what, when that was loaded.
State or the county?
Well, the county would've done it by the state.
By the state's regulations.
By the state's regulations.
Steve, what did you say that rate was? It was really truly the weight rated at twenty-six and somebody downsized it to twenty-one?
It's at twenty-one, thirty-one, and forty-four, depending on the truck. You know, we have a lot of bridges like that one, that is perfectly legal to put that minimum weight on those bridges instead of posting the three-truck like that it has on that picture there. It's perfectly legal to put the minimum on there to restrict heavier trucks. And that's what was done on that one from way back, as far as I can find, back in the eighty paperwork that I found.
Is that how most of our bridges are? Is that twenty, that twenty-foot span or twenty-foot plus on, on the, on the, on the bridges, Steve?
Oh, probably, yeah.
Okay.
It was a majority.
So, Russ's theory is going to work on most of the bridges that we have out there?
It's gonna work, but we gotta, we gotta tear it up.
That's why the tractor trailer's.
Or, or let it collapse.
I have a comment, since I'm sitting in the county attorney's chair.
Be careful now.
That we need, be illegal with any of this, because if that, if that's what the state's doing, and there is case law that says if it's, if, if, if it's signed and it's rated twenty-one ton, that's what it is. It doesn't ma- and, and all this stuff about spans, doesn't matter. I don't know if that's true, but we need to find out, cause I don't know.
No, I don't, I, I don't, I don't know either, but what, well, what you're saying, you're making sense.
But, but I'm not saying it, all I'm doing is looking at this sheet right here, and it says, I can take that twenty, a thirty ton bridge right here and make it a forty.
You can drive forty-three ton over it?
You see?
I've seen.
Okay.
So, I'm just telling you what, what the rule is.
Right.
So that, so that's, that, this sign is pretty much backing up what you just said, Russ. I, I, I'm guessing, I don't know.
But there's an email here from a Kent Miller that's saying, um, these limits would apply to the entire bridge and would be governed by the limiting capacity of any part of the bridge. It's not just for one, um, this is, they would apply to the whole bridge, or, or just one span, either way. That's what his email says, but that would contradict this, I think.
Well, what Russ is saying though, each span's twenty ton. I guess you could think of it the same. A straight truck rating right now is twenty-one ton on there. That straight truck, dump truck's gonna be in one span, then in the other span, and it's rated at that twenty-one ton. The tractor trailer that's at the forty ton is kind of the same theory, that's why it's up at the forty-four ton. It's because you got part of it in that first span, it's going off, and then the part in the second span.
Yeah.
That doesn't, that's how I guess they're, they're coming up, that doesn't mean that each span is, that's why that rating's higher.
Who's your source, Steve, that you could, that you could go to with this?
I talked to Bridge Division, Kent Miller, and, uh, Kent Miller is mostly the one that we talked to.
Well, if we're building illegal bridges for what we're letting our taxpayers run over, we gotta fix some bridges and a lot of them.
Well, I, I, I don't know that that's, that that's what we've done.
You gotta keep in mind, these are bridges built back in the nineteen hundreds.
Yeah.
Well, that was rebuilt eight ninety-eight, or two thousand eight.
Two thousand eight, the deck was redone, not the substructure, but the deck was redone, so.
So, what, this email that you just had from Miller, that's indicating that that bridge is rated for the total bridge and not per span?
Correct.
Is that what he said? Okay.
So that's, that's every, that's every, that's just not that one, every bridge is rated for the whole structure.
This doesn't apply to that bridge then?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so.
So that's why you have a twenty-one dump truck, the rating, it's gonna be in the one span, put it in the other span, it's still twenty-one ton. So if you wanna do your by span, well, your per span, that's forty-two ton, you just add on each span.
Eighty, that's eighty, eighty-four thousand.
That's why the tractor trailer's at forty-four span.
That's eighty-four thousand or gross, I think they can, you can enter that. Are you, are you, are you Ben?
I'm Ben.
Okay.
So. Ben, you're, you're the one that's using this bridge up here, okay? Gotcha, okay, okay.
So, but after talking with NDOT, now they're gonna re, re, uh, re-load test the bridge.
Ben, would, would you come up here for just a second? I, I've, I've got a couple questions for you. We'll, we'll be easy on you.
Okay.
Would you just give your name and address for the record, please?
Yeah, it's, uh, Ben Jansen, my address is, uh, one hundred two ninety-eight, Road eighty-three, Bear, Nebraska.
Gotcha. What kind of tonnage are you hauling on, on all of this stuff right now?
Total tons that we're gonna take up there?
No, I mean, per, per load.
Per load, twenty-three to twenty-five ton, you know, per load is what we're getting on, cause we're hauling, mostly with belly dumps, so.
Okay. So that would be that, that thirty-three that we're looking at here?
Well, I don't know, I don't know what his gross vehicle, that, that was, that's his net.
Most, most of the trucks have been about seventy-six to seventy-eight thousand pounds gross.
Below the eighty, yes.
Below, yeah, below the eighty, okay.
You know, cause that's just what the capacity, cubic yard capacity is and the weight of the material.
Yeah.
Uh, but that's kind of general average where everything's been at, just, you know, that's seventy-six, seventy-eight thousand pounds gross.
So if carrier enforcement was sitting at that bridge, waiting for you to come across, would he bust you?
Yes, they would.
For something?
They would. I talked to them.
Yeah.
Okay.
Twenty ton is a gross, according to their reading, cause I don't think those guys, I, I, not everybody has their stuff in the same group here, it's, it's, uh, it's like, it's like when I called around. There's no organization.
So, what you're saying then, or, or, you also, that that carrier enforcement would have cited you for driving over that bridge because you're over the twenty?
Well, I found out, yes.
They will, absolutely.
So Russ's theory is not applying to what the carriers are, are looking at, is that what I'm hearing?
The only bridges we have that are legal in this county that are actually haul, allowing legal loads over are our, um, our, um, box called box loads. Because our bridges aren't gonna, they're not gonna, they're not gonna take the span.
Cause if you, if you do.
Concrete bridges.
You know, cause if you do the math on this at twenty-two, you, you guys can't even take a maintenance across that bridge at twenty, at twenty-two ton, or twenty, twenty-one ton. Cause a typical lane weighs forty-four to forty-six thousand pounds.
And look during harvest. What, what do you got going over, over har- anything harvest time?
Or the, like you said, shipping cattle or?
Shipping cattle or?
They've got cattle, I don't know how many hundreds, I don't even know how many thousands loads of cattle have been over that.
Yeah, you can't even take an empty cattle, a lot of trailer across that bridge, empty.
I guess the concern is, is that, yeah, we have thirty-some bridges this way, thirty-some bridges that this is happening probably on a daily basis. And, um, I guess
So how?
we haven't had, and we haven't really had a significant issue, other than this came up because of the significant number of loads being hauled, and somebody complained.
Yep.
Ben, how many loads have you got across here now? How far, how far are you into this project?
Oh, we've probably got about three thousand ton up there already.
How many loads is that? Hundred, hundred fifty?
Hundred, twelve, thirty, forty.
And you're looking at nine hundred, two-year-old, about nine hundred loads?
Yeah, twenty-two thousand tons, sort of. Cause I've got, there's eleven hundred and four forty irrigated acres up there, we're gonna put twenty-tonade down.
Here, here's, here's what's boggling me a bit. We've got all these bridges in the county. We all know that those bridges are going to be used, are going to be overloaded, especially during harvest time. Why do we even, why? We, we put a number on it, knowing that, knowing, knowing that that's, that that's going to be exceeded come harvest time, or moving cattle, or whatever the case might be. That's what's puzzling me right now. I, I, and, and if we go by Russ's theory on strand by strand.
Well, this is, this is state's theory.
I understand, I, I, I understand, I'm not arguing with you, I'm just saying.
I know you're not, I know you're not.
I'm just, I'm just saying that, that, uh, we're in violation of our own tonnage here.
But isn't there some, uh, there's some kind of regulations from the carrier enforcement that comes out of the state during harvest time, isn't there? That gives some additional?
You're allowed a fifty, fifty, fifty percent overage during harvest.
Fifteen percent overage during harvest.
But that, that wouldn't even cover what you're doing, no?
No, that don't even cover it, no. And, you know, I mean, twenty ton on this bridge here, this isn't even in the realm of possibilities of what everybody, I mean, I've talked to Larry Rice, Shane Simons, all these guys, I mean, there's hun- well over a hundred semi loads of cattle that go up and down out of that country.
Which are exceeding probably what you're, what you're hauling.
Oh, yeah, a, a, a typical empty cattle pot, truck and trailer, you're talking forty-three to forty-five thousand pounds, technically, they can't even take an empty truck up there.
Yeah.
Empty thousand is what we're going to.
Am I talking empty, here we, you know, truck and trailer, typical cattle pot, truck, you know, forty-three of quads, forty-three, forty-five thousand.
Well, I think that the, the bo- the bottom line is that, is that the weight limits aren't equal to, to the vehicles that are going over the bridge.
Oh, yeah, yeah, exactly.
That's all announced to here.
I, when I talked to our Craig, actually, Craig, um, Carlson talked to, uh, Mike at Husker Steel, and he's the engineer that builds bridges. He builds our bridge, he's built some bridge decks for us, I believe, he's.
Yeah.
And, and he builds a lot of bridge decks throughout the state. He, he builds everything to state spec, what it should be. He said, and on these older wooden bridges, the hardest thing on those wooden bridges is when we get a washout ahead of the bridge, and you get a divot, and that truck comes in and bounces onto there. He said, now you're not putting twenty ton down, you're putting forty ton down. He said, when that truck leaves the air and it hits, he said, you've got an impact, it's like a jackhammer.
I suppose, yeah.
He said, the only restriction that that bridge should have is a speed restriction, so when they come onto that bridge, it flows over nice and go, and rolls on by. He said, that you stop that impact. He said, if you stop the impact, you're gonna stop the shock going into there, and you'll, that bridge will carry it fine.
Well, I'm not sure I understand what we're sitting here talking about, because, I mean,
I don't either.
we don't have the authority to go give a ticket.
Correct, nope.
So we could sit there all day long and watch them drive across, and there's not much we can do about it, other than call carrier enforcement and ask them to be there. So what is our intention here? What's the plan?
Is that what the protocol is gonna be then is, I mean, obviously, he's been doing it, which
Everybody, well, everybody, everybody that lives around him.
The next person that calls in and complains, and they say, well, this guy's going across, and I, you know, I just want us to be on the same page.
Have them coming.
And if I tell them, well, no, you can't do that, then they're gonna call, of course, call you guys and say, well, you said I can, and we'll be right back in here, so.
Yeah.
Are we guys gonna let them have it?
Yeah, we're not. I, 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 I for one, excuse me?
Oh, go ahead, go ahead, Tom.
Okay. I, I for one, do not want to penalize this gentleman, or the farmers, or the ranchers that are in that area for violating something that may be violating, I don't know. I don't know. I, 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 I'm, I'm very interested in what Russ is talking about, is strand per strand, rather than the whole bridge.
And I'm really interested, if we're gonna make any decisions tonight, that we reduce the speed on the, on that bridge in particular right now, where it's a wood approach. If it had a concrete approach ahead of it, you're not gonna bounce onto, there's no approach on that bridge. And I'd like to see a speed reduction on that bridge, that that's something that we could enforce, and that's what I'm asking for.
Well, I, if, if, if we're going by what Mr. Miller said in the email, then we're in violation of our own weight limits throughout the whole county, and I don't
Everywhere.
I don't, I don't, I don't know that we are, I don't know, because there, I think there's people a lot smarter than us that are putting those weight limits on for a reason.
That's right.
And they've got, and, and they've got it figured out.
There was a reason they built those bridges like they did, and there's been a reason. We've been running semis over them for fifty years.
Right, and these people understand and know that our farmers are gonna be out there with eighteen-wheelers, cattle trucks are gonna be on it, and they're going to far exceed the numbers that we set out here. Uh, I, I'm assuming, I don't know, I'm not a bridge, I'm.
Ben, Ben called me a couple, well, I think last week one night, and the only thing I told him is I said, I, we can't restrict you from going over it, everybody else is, but I can tell you, I'd like to see the trucks slowed down, better, alright?
Yeah, I, I think everybody's done it.
But I told you to deal with Steve pretty outside, you know, I, I don't try to override that guy.
I, I think we need some questions answered here, to be honest with you, I.
The general purpose was just to make sure that we're on the same page for future issues.
Well, I, I think for every bridge that we have is gonna be a future issue, if in fact this thing hits the paper and the new, and the, and the, and the K and E B and everything else. I, I don't think it's just gonna go away. I think it's something that we need to deal with and get a, a definitive answer on it. Yes, we're doing it okay, we're doing things the way it's supposed to be done, this is, this is what this sign says, and, and, and we're doing things all right, so, you know, just calm down.
We actually have a truck go through one of these bridges, I don't know that, we, we know really what the load capacity is. We, no, no, we've not, I've never had a truck go through one.
Really?
Was that a wood bridge, Steve?
Yep, it was a timber.
But they just ruined the top of it?
And so, what happened then?
Well, that's that one bridge nowhere you're talking about, my favorite bridge.
Okay. Uh, I, I would like to see, and I, I appreciate the sheriff's discussion on this thing too, is to get a opinion from somebody that can come back and say, yes, what Russ is saying is absolutely correct, or no, he's, he's all wet.
Yeah, and I probably am, but I'm gonna tell you what, are you guys willing to shut down all the semi traffic in this county?
No, I don't, I, and that's.
Till we have a problem.
And that's what I said, I'm not going to penalize, I'm not going to penalize our farmers and ranchers, uh, or, or any other commercial operation that's going on, because we don't, you know, we're getting conflicting things of what, what, what that weight limit is.
These guys pay a big share of taxes, and I think they pay more than the price of the bridge every year, if you take the entirety where farmers and ranchers.
They're probably, yeah, probably correct.
Well, I'm not gonna hold a hostage on this.
Go ahead, Mark.
Shut down the truck traffic, it was just to make sure it's bored.
Yeah.
I.
But we, but.
How we deal with this, because certainly, there's some kind of limit, there's some kind of limit that's gonna put somebody through the bridge. And we don't want that either, right?
No.
So, we, we, our goal here is to work with the, um, local farmers, ranchers, uh, and commercial people within limits, and I mean, the state does it all the time, going up and down the interstate or wherever else. They have to work with them within limits, and there has to be something here within limits. Now, those bridges were all designed back in the days when,
Yeah.
when we were using beat trucks that had single axles and.
Yeah, two-ton beat truck.
Yeah, sixteen, twenty-foot beatbox on them, and that was it.
You bet.
And now, part of the problem is, is they all need to be probably updated, but that isn't in the cards either, I mean, to redo thirty-eight of them all of a sudden.
Who would you go to for clarification on all this? State-wise?
Well, do you wanna be able to, like, this rubber man?
Well, I think we could maybe do both, I think we could maybe do both.
Is that gonna change anything? Are you guys gonna wanna shut down traffic?
No, absolutely not.
What good is your opinion gonna be with those bridges you're holding up? We haven't had anybody go through, and other than that wood bridge, it should have had a surface break, well, they broke the stringers on that one, but I'm sure they hit that, like we're talking, too fast, hit it.
Well, other, other than the fact that you've got an email from Miller, and I don't know what his position is at the state. Okay, so he supposedly knows what he's talking about.
Yeah.
You've got an opinion from him, and, and we've got a, uh, we've got something coming from, which I think, again, makes sense. We just need, we just need to, to get it blended, to make sure we're doing everything okay.
If we get something we don't like, if it comes into something that isn't right, I mean, we're gonna have to shut them all down.
Yeah, I, I don't, I'm not.
But I don't think, if you think tax protests are tough.
I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't believe we wanna do that, I really don't.
I don't think I want any part of it.
Cause if, if that's the case, I mean, these folks use these bridges every day.
We'll just fix these bridges as they go out, that's all I can tell you. We'll close them and fix them as they go out.
And hope, hope nobody goes through. Is that right? Really?
There's still running some.
Yeah.
How do you test them? How do you test the bridges, what they can hold?
So they go off, uh, well, age, of course, they'll have to, well, measuring, uh, timber, you know, composing of the timber. Any, uh, loss, section loss, concrete or steel, all that, it's, it's, concrete, you know, it's, it's.
Does it state?
It has to be done by an engineer.
So, if you were questioning the tonnage on one of our bridges now, and saying, hmm, we have twenty-one ton on this, and I'm questioning whether it should be lower or higher, who, what would you do? You, meaning us, like, meaning the county?
Yes, the county, we brought hired engineer, they would go out and take measurements, section loss, and, 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 and shear points to see if there's any cracking and all that. And they, they're gonna put it all on their computer, with their all, it's a lot of it, they'll pump it.
Right. Done by an engineer, a, a state engineer or local, could be a private?
Uh, the engineers here don't do, you don't go back, he's, 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 NDOT is doing that one there, so they can do it.
NDOT could do it.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, you know, um, the concern here is, is just simply, the easy answer is, do what Russ suggested, and that's, let's keep doing what we've been doing.
And fix whatever breaks, we're here to fix what breaks.
Fix what breaks.
I don't know what the alternative is.
But I think, you know, any one of, uh, any one of the neighbors out there, or anyone else is gonna be complaining, and they can complain to us, but we don't have the authority to give them a ticket anyway.
Well, that's part of how it was started, cause when I, I went and talked to the road people and notified the neighbors that, hey, there's gonna be a bunch of truck traffic here, and tried to do it out of safety and.
You did it the right way.
Consider consideration.
You did it the right way.
What, what Ben basically did was called Sioux County and asked them if they could keep a blade out, because he knows that road up in Sioux County, it has no gravel, it's just pure blow sand. And he asked them if they could kind of be there to keep pulling that road together. Well, they got all butthurt, I'm gonna say, and, uh, got ahold of two other road and bridge superintendents and see if we could shut these trucks down. Well, I don't think that's our job.
Yeah. Okay, Steve, would you continue to work on this with us, please, and, and maybe pull this all together, cause I think at, at this particular point, at this particular point, black and white, it is that we're probably, if, if, if that's what this is saying, we're in violation of our own rules and regulations, or whatever, whatever weight limits are put on it. And, and we violate them on a daily basis. And, and, and I agree, I agree with you, Russ, is that we just continue as we're doing, uh, cause I'm, I, I, and I'll say it again, I'm not for shutting any farmer or rancher down from, from using the bridges that they're paying for, and I'm not, not gonna do that.
They pay, they pay the, pay for this county to operate.
And we'll keep working with you.
You bet, well, that's all I have to say.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll do what we can.
Use a common sense approach with it, I guess.
That's, that's what I'm trying to get to, except that I'm getting more things thrown at me that are saying, well, this isn't, this is right, or it is. Uh, so Steve, if you can bring us some more information on this, try to get it all clarified, that, that would make everybody feel better, okay? All right. Thank you, thanks, guys. Okay.
Lost our map. All right. Steve, did you have, did you have one more thing? In my packet at home, didn't you have some, or was that just a note you said to me about a change order on, uh, the bridge?
Well, that's gonna take off.
Well, I got two.
Okay. And, and I wanted to ask you, it's, I, I, it's not on the agenda, uh, the plans for that north end of Steagle Road.
Uh, Baker is starting to work on that.
Okay, as I'm, I'm, I'm starting to get several complaints on it already, so.
Yeah, me too.
Okay. Okay, good. All right, thank you, appreciate that, thanks, Steve. Okay, moving on to general gent items, is, uh, discuss and consider approval of the public sector vote for Western Nebraska Tourism Coalition. Brenda.
Okay, so every year we talk about this, um, this is to, um, designate the public voting members for the Western Nebraska Tourism Coalition, which is just, um, nineteen counties in the western part of the state. Um, we have our own coalition so that we can, um, market Western Nebraska as an entity itself, and we put out the destination Western Nebraska and travel guide, um, that goes all over, you know, to different, um, trade shows, and then, of course, across Nebraska. And, um, every year we have to have, we have two sections in Scottsbluff County that can vote. So, we have the private members, and that's like Carla and the different attractions, and then, of course, since we use lodging tax, um, you are the public, um, vote. And so, every year you designate two people that, um, intend on going to the meetings and being, um, a part of the meetings to vote on your behalf. And so, this year, we were, we have selected me as the designated public voter, and for, if I can't attend the meetings, then our, our alternate member would be Chuck Heeman, and he is a member of the tourism, uh, the county tourism board.
So, does this take board action to do, or you, you guys just appoint yourselves?
Yes, yes, I just need your permission that you will allow us to vote.
Is Charlie still there on the phone?
Charlie? Charlie used to, okay, did you hear that?
Yeah, I'm here. Yeah, this is something we do every year, um, and then Brenda's pretty much got it lined up, how it needs to happen, um.
And you would-
I don't have any concerns that, you know, we trust Brenda, and, uh, it's all on our, our behalf, and she can't be there, then that will, uh, move forward with, with, uh, with what the, uh, tourism board considers, um, their best interest, uh, Scottsbluff County's best interest.
Okay, as far as your thoughts, you're okay with it?
Absolutely.
Okay. Okay, with that, I would entertain a motion for approval, uh, to allow Brenda as our representative, and then, who, what was the other name, I'm sorry?
Chuck Heeman.
Chuck Heeman would be the al- alternate, if you, if you were not able to make it.
If I'm unable to attend, yes.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Record your votes, please. You probably could, you know as much about it as I do.
Okay, here's, uh-
All right. Where do I need, where do I sign, Brenda? Thank you very much. Okay, thanks, Brenda. Okay. Uh, moving on, discuss and consider approval of letter of support for broadband projects tabled from the February fifth meeting. John Barrett, uh, Great Plains Communication Vice President of Government Affairs.
See you here.
I don't see him.
Should we re-table that one?
Uh, I, I, I think, I think our wishes are still the same, that we certainly wanna talk to whoever it is, and have them give us a-
Okay, so, I'm not sure if I mislabeled this, or, I know I took Ebony off, but I'm not sure if I was supposed to reschedule Great Plains. So, there's nobody here from Great Plains right now?
No, so I would move, I would entertain a motion to table?
I'll make a motion to, uh, continue to table this until-
Till, till a future date.
Sorry, guys.
Great Plains sends some representation.
And they can contact Kelly when they're able to be here.
Yeah, that's true.
Pardon?
He's straight to-
Okay.
Do I have a second?
Do I have a s-
Second.
All right, any discussion? Call the roll, please. I mean, not call the roll, record your votes, I'm sorry. I had a flashback there for a minute. Mine, there it goes, all right.
And then you removed, uh-
And removed the second one, yeah, the next one.
Okay, so we'll move on.
So, move on to discuss, consider the appointment of the assessor, Lisa.
Okay, on June twenty-seventh, you all, we had to make a decision to put somebody in the assessor's office, and we had a special meeting that day, and you appointed Gene Bauer to be your interim deputy assessor. And October thirteenth, Angela Dillman did resign as the assessor, and in the meantime, we've had Robert Simpson come on, October second, to be our office manager. I guess we're at a point now where we can probably post the job for interim, interim assessor. We did this before when Amy Ramos resigned, and so the person would be basically interim assessor until they can put their name on the ballot to be elected, so.
Can't they be appointed?
Is that the word?
Do they have to be an interim?
No, it would be, it would-
No, they have to be until they're elected.
Well, it would be appointed-
They have to be appointed until they're elected, but do they have to-
It would be appointed by this board until the next election.
Is that how they have?
So, they're interim, is that correct?
No, they're appointed.
They're, they're the assessor.
They would be the assessor, that's correct.
And I guess that's what we did with-
Just like we did with Angela.
We did that with Angela, that's what I'm saying.
You made her interim so that you could advertise for the job.
And we've done that with some other positions also, I think.
There we go, 'cause, yeah, that's where we're at.
You made her interim so you could advertise for the position.
Yes, okay.
Right, but then once that's done, then we're, we're appointing that whatever person is decided upon as the assessor until the next election.
Right. To fill, to fill out that term.
That had to be certified.
Right.
Have their certification completed as an assessor.
Right.
So, I would la- ask that you allow us to post the position for him.
Okay. Uh, in, in, in that, I, I, I would like to have, uh, at least one or two board members in on that, on the interview.
Right.
Uh, whoever, whoever is wanting to do that. Do you wanna do it, okay? Anybody else?
I'm available to meet it.
Okay. So, uh-
Would you?
Um, it mattered to me.
Would you rather have my spot?
What's that?
Would you rather take my spot? Go ahead, if you prefer, just so we have representation, I think we should have somebody-
We have, have at least two, yeah.
If you'll take it, I'll just, we'll just let, or take one.
Mark and Mike.
Mike and Mark.
So, Mark and Mike?
Mark and Mike, okay.
It'll be-
Let us know.
Let, let, let you know when, uh, when the applicants are completed and just start setting up interviews, okay?
Our process right now, because we do need to post the position to allow all app, eligible applicants to apply, and we'll probably give it a week, and then we'd be ready to start interviewing unless you wouldn't think we need to hold it open any longer.
Unless, unless, unless you didn't get any applicants.
I said a week, if we would post it tomorrow, we could probably take a week.
Well, next meeting, we could act on it.
And we can have our interviews and act on it on the March fifth meeting, is that?
Okay, so I-
March fourth?
I would entertain a motion for that, please.
March fourth, yeah, that's- Thank you, we have a meeting March fifth.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we, uh, uh-
Okay. Go ahead.
Okay, that, I'll make a motion.
I'm, I'm just waiting for you to do it.
Okay, I'd make a motion, we take applications for assessor for Scottsbluff County, yeah, for an interim assessor.
And that, and that Mike Blue and, and, uh, Mark, uh-
Not interim assessor.
For the assessor that we will appoint.
Okay. And then Mike and Mark would be the representatives from the board on that, on that interview panel.
Yes.
Okay, is there a second?
All seconded.
Uh, is there any discussion? Record your votes, please.
I still think you-
There it is, all right. Okay, Kelly?
Okay, we're good?
Yes, thank you.
For yeses?
Yes. Okay, thank you. Uh, next item is, uh, under old business, we have none. Uh, we'll move into public comments. The board of commissioners will receive public comment on items discussed at this meeting or suggestions for items of discussion at a future board meeting. Uh, we won't take any action on anything, but is there anybody that wishes to speak to the board? If, if you do, we'd like you to come up to the podium and state your name and address, please, just for the record. Nobody, all right. Move on to board and staff reports, we'll start with the board. Russ?
Okay, I got a, uh, an attaboy, not for me, but for some of our employees, and I, I like to read this tonight, if it's okay with everyone.
We can't hear you.
I got a letter from, pardon? Okay, I got a letter from, uh, Curtis Howard, Dan Howard's son, and Dan, and Dan as well on this. It says, hi, Russ, I wanted to let you know Alicia Kaufman and Gene Bauer were extremely helpful in letting, getting the bottom, getting to the bottom of the easement questions we had. They were very knowledgeable, professional, and a joy to work with. I know that chasing down this older information isn't an easy task, we appreciate them, their efforts. Ashley Stott was also great to work with in mapping, just wanted to let the commissioners know that the progress forward is, is, uh, not going unnoticed. Attitude and efforts reflects directly to leadership, thank you, and so, Curtis Howard. Just wanna thank you ladies for everything you do for us. When I get those, it, it makes me smile, I mean, I just, I just feel good about that. Let me check.
I'm just saying whatever.
Okay.
We've had someone on the road and bridge too that I haven't read, and I think we need to start recognizing these people for, I mean, they, these are good attitudes and, but it's being passed along, so, I mean, it's-
Well, rather than complaints all the time, we're getting, we're getting some-
Print them out, let's get them in the packet.
Yeah.
Two.
Yeah, we could do that. Okay, Mike, anything?
Well, my county housing board was canceled, uh, I did go to the nine-one-one, uh, advisory board meeting this afternoon, and I've, uh, been having some meetings with, uh, several fire agencies, and that's pretty much it.
Okay. Mark?
Um, this last week, I had a panhandle public health meeting, that was the first one that, um, I've been involved with, so I'm just kinda getting my feet wet and understanding what's happening there, and have several meetings coming up here in the future. Um, I also had a Harland Express meeting this past week, they have a number of activities going on, they have a Washington DC fly-in, and a couple of the members are going to, to help represent, um, our deeds with the Harland Expressway, and, um, the, uh, also on the line was the, um, Port St. Plains chairman, and again, uh, somewhat explaining how things are going up and down the corridor of, um, the, the four lane for the Harland Expressway, and simply put, you know, uh, um, everybody's anxious to do something, um, but not very many people have money to do it. And, um, that's the only thing slowing things down is having the funds, and, um, trying to get some, uh, federal money, if it's at all possible. Uh, and, um, we're working with, staying in touch with state people, um, Doug Leaf Green was there, our state, uh, representative on the Department of Transportation, and, uh, and they're also gonna have a meeting out here in Gearing, I believe it's in May. Um, and if anybody's interested in going to that, I'll bring the dates with me next time. But, um, anyway, um, so that went well, I thought. Um, the, uh, only other thing, Ms. Kelly, as I like to always do, and that's, can we confirm some dates?
Okay. Can I just start popping off with some stuff?
Yeah.
Okay, so March fourth, we have our regular meeting. March fifth at eight-thirty AM, we have our public auction for the land sale. March eighteenth is a regular meeting. Um, throwing it out there, as my reminder, March twenty-seventh is our, uh, panhandle district meeting in Bridgeport. Starting in the morning at the community center.
At Niko.
Yeah.
Yes.
Kelly, would, would that be too much trouble for you to, just to send that out, the email to everybody as a reminder?
Again, I can do that.
That'd be, yeah, that'd be good, yeah.
If I could get a reply, we could get you registered too, if you wanna go.
Sure, sure.
Yeah, great.
I'm just, I'm still, I'm, I'm hoping I can get to it, we'll see.
Did I go out far enough, or you weren't?
I think so.
Okay, Mark, do you have anything else?
July eighth through the fifteenth is tax protest time.
Yeah, we know that now.
Don't put the fifteenth on it, we're just doing the eighth.
All right.
Yeah.
Uh, I had several meetings, uh, starting with the aging meeting, I, I reported that we did, the aging office did purchase a building downtown Gearing, they're gonna be moving probably in April or May, it's the old plumber insurance building, uh, working with those folks, uh, trying to make their, their move as easy as possible. Region one, biggest thing we did at that meeting, probably, is voted to, uh, discontinue the hybrid scheduling. Uh, I think the, I think the vote, I think there are only two or three that voted to keep, but the rest, everybody else voted to, uh, basically ask the folks to come to work in the, in the building.
Hybrid meeting?
Hybrid, work, work, work at home or work not, or whatever, whatever choice you wanted. Uh, a lot of discussion, gosh, we must've talked for an hour on it before a, a vote was actually taken. Uh, but they are, and I think, trying to remember the date, I believe it's April one, April, April or May, is that when everybody's back? Uh, so it was a very interesting meeting, uh, a lot of, this is something that the commissioner out of, out of Crawford, uh, Dawes County, uh, had, had been kind of on that. Uh, anyway, got that, we got that settled, I don't believe that the employees are very happy about it, but, uh, it is, it, it is what it is, everybody's got their, their concerns. Uh, I brought it up to our, to you guys, and you were at it, but that you felt that they needed to come to work, and that's, that's what I expressed to them also. But, uh, the, uh, that's really the only meetings that I've had that really did anything, the area disability wasn't, there wasn't a whole lot going on there. But other than that, it was, it was a busy week, very busy week. Uh, did have, uh, yeah, I did, I don't know if I reported on it, on the, on the Capwin meeting, uh, lots of stuff, 'cause they're looking at relocating. They, they've got a, a firm that they've hired that is looking at land, uh, to either rebuild or something, and there are, uh, investors that are wanting, they, he works with an investment group that helps out with that sort of thing, yeah. This building that they're in, it's in the floodplain, it's got a lot of conditions with it, so they're looking at doing something different. What it's gonna be, I don't know, or when it's gonna be, I have no idea, they're just talking numbers right now. Anyway, uh, it was a busy week, busy week. So, we'll start with staff over here, Lisa?
Can I, can I chime in?
Yes, go ahead, I'm sorry, I forgot that you're here.
Oh, that's okay. Uh, I was just gonna talk about, um, Niko's efforts in L B ten sixty-seven, which is the legislative bill to, uh, eliminate the inheritance tax. Uh, it made it to the floor of the legislature this afternoon, um, and it had a lot of people sick to their stomachs. Uh, no, whether you like inheritance tax or not, uh, the fact of the matter is, if inheritance tax goes away without replacement revenue, it will cause policies to have to increase our property tax pass. Um, what happened on the floor today was really, um, you know, was short and sweet. Um, and, you know, what we had, what was, what was done, uh, you know, on the microphone, was very little compared to what was done at the Rotunda, and what was done, uh, with senators speaking amongst themselves on the floor. Uh, and they were supposed to be continued to debate on this item tomorrow.
Okay. Charlie, I'm glad you brought that up, I even made a, I even made myself a note, I was gonna talk about it, and I, I didn't do it, but go ahead.
Okay. So, senators Clement, uh, withdrew his, um, bill from the chairman, likely after, um, a lot of pushing from other senators needing to find, uh, really, the, the- it's kind of like there's a concept that that replacement revenue must, must accompany or be a, an amendment on this bill. And that, uh, Senator Jacobson out of both class is very much against the, uh, if we do logic tax for that replacement, um, so it's kind of like we're gonna be able to, um, keep, except that it's already cheap. Logic tax as it is, and we'll work on some sort of replacement, uh, from another source, which would be, which would be a huge win, um, you know, we'd get rid of inheritance tax and we'd get replacement revenue. Um, which would solidify, uh, you know, that response because, you know, Naco and his counties played defense on this bill, uh, and spent a lot of time with other states, uh, defending the inheritance tax. If we could just give replacement revenue, it would be even, it would come as a win for the counties.
Right, right. One of the other, one of the other revenues that they were talking about was increasing the, uh, the reimbursement at, at, at the jail from thirty-nine to a hundred bucks.
Yeah, yeah, that'd be significant.
That would be, yeah.
It would work for the counties, but all the counties don't pay taxes, so.
And for, for the folks sitting out here, we, we bring in around seven hundred thousand dollars a year off of inheritance tax. Sometimes it's less, sometimes it's a little more, depending on, on the, depending on the, on the deaths or whatever that, that's going on. So it's a significant, it would be a significant impact to Scotts Bluff County. I, I don't like taxes either, I hate taxes, I, I hate paying them. But, and then, we have, we have been using it for a long period of time. We, there needs to be some type of replacement, and I think, and I think you're right, Charlie, in the fact that, I, I think it's losing some steam possibly, and it's only because of the replacement revenue that they're not able to come up with, at least right now. We'll have to, we'll have to wait and see what, what's happening. I did, I didn't get to watch all of it, I taped it, and then before I came to the meeting, I was trying to watch as much of it as I could, as, as boring as that could be, but, uh...
I, let me mention one other thing that, um, I see, we just got sent an email from John Cannon and Naco. And he's saying that, um, the, he doubts whether they'll, um, get to that item on the agenda tomorrow. But it'll probably be, um, dealt with again on Thursday and Friday.
Yeah.
And so we should just be aware of that for the commissioners. You can read the email that came through, and it just came through in the last thirty minutes or so.
Right, and he is, he is encouraging, and I think all of us got the, got the email, to contact your center and let your thoughts known, for or against, whatever, you know, however you wanna do it. But it, uh, and I, and I can't imagine somebody in Douglas County, or some of the larger counties, what their, their loss would be if they didn't have it. So there needs to be something to balance it out, otherwise everybody's gonna end up having to pay a little bit more, and, uh, we, we pay enough the way it is, so, anyway.
I just had a couple other topics, um, Mark Harris, what, Commissioner Harris, what, uh, what is, what are the thoughts around the Heartland Expressway in terms of, uh, what's being done in Colorado? My, my, my feeling is that they do not plan to become a Florida, I mean, their, their plan is to be go super two, which, uh, kind of defeats the whole purpose, it's combined our, our efforts to, to put that Florida in there.
Right, um...
Have you heard anything on that?
No, I don't, I'm not up to speed on that as much as I should be. Um, but, um, um, as I attend more meetings with them, I hope to be able to possibly report that to you at the next, after the next meeting.
Yeah, I know, I know they, that, that group doesn't speak very often, but one, one question I would have for them is, what are, what is Colorado's intentions? I heard an interesting stat last week that, uh, the border has been built from, we'll discuss, well, the traffic county is exactly the same as it was when it was a two-way. So, you know, we talk about, you know, Trump likes to talk about NATO not putting in their finish share, or the other country not paying their finish share, and NATO, well, here we have Colorado, you know, moving back this Heartland Expressway. How do we hold their feet still higher to get this thing done?
Yeah.
Um, I think, I think it was, it was, we're kinda here in the middle of this thing, and it, you know, it's like we've got a lot of hard part, Colorado will not that bad part.
I'll try and get an update.
I don't know if there's a, our special delegation can, can put some pressure there, um, without, uh, call the Smith or, or Fisher or, or Rickles.
I have a question.
And then the other, the other item I had, is Brenda still there?
No.
No.
No, she left.
Oh, okay, okay. You know, we do have the cattle market ball coming out this year, and I believe, um, county tourism committee, uh, gave, gave, uh, a spend of fourteen thousand five hundred to, to help us with, um, the cattle market ball. So, that will be coming up probably in the March meeting.
That's correct.
To have that on your radar, so you can digest that a little bit, but it's, it's a fair piece, um, and, and, you know, look, guys, fill the, look, guys, fill the hotel rooms for sure, we're gonna check out here. I was working at the heart of the end of two thousand, and when they turned out, and it was, it was tremendous, it was absolutely amazing. Those folks out here spending a lot of their hair. You know, for these guys that don't show up, if somebody, if somebody asks for a letter of support, you know, for a broadband project or anything, and don't show up to a meeting, but why is, why is it our responsibility, or why don't we take them, make them the effort to call them, encourage them to come to a meeting? Uh, you know, these are out of town, out of state groups that, um, you know, aren't showing up on their own position, it's not like they, like they had a flat tire and, you know, which is tall all the way up here. They couldn't make it, they're just not showing up.
Well, I would-
And then we make, and then they don't call or ask for, we can't really deal with that, but from what I understand, it, it is our offices that are calling them and asking them to tell the person rather than telephone. But I, I just don't know if that's, um, really our, our place to be, to be doing that sort of thing. But I just really like that.
Well, the-
I'd like to speak to this because-
That, they were, they were asked to be on the agenda, and were just responding to their, to their agenda item.
As I stated at the beginning of the meeting, I'm not sure if I misplaced them on this one, and they were supposed to be on the March 4th. I know for a fact John Barrett couldn't be here today.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll deal with that, and I, I, I don't disagree with it, Charlie. Others that have asked for support have been here, and we've been able to ask them questions. Whether, whether we like the people that they send, it doesn't really matter, I guess.
I have a question.
Even before, even before tonight, you know, somebody doesn't show up to a meeting, you know, they have to be on the phone call, and they don't-
Right.
You know, the phone call.
I, 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 that, that's their responsibility, Charlie, I understand, yeah. Okay. Alright, anything else, Charlie? One other thing before, before we move on, just a reminder, tomorrow night at the Legacy of the Plains from five to eight is the solar open house presentation, if anybody's interested.
Is it Legacy of the Plains?
Yes. Okay, Lisa? Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Can you speak to whether, um, can commissioners go to that, um, only two commissioners go to that, would it be, uh, what they call a happenstance, that more than two show up?
Here was, here was- Here was my opinion on that, Charlie, is that I think in, under normal times, it probably wouldn't be a big deal, but there's a lot of, a lot of discussion and controversy about this one. I was gonna go, but I'm, I'm not, I think Mike's gonna go, and I don't know, I think you're going, Charlie, is that correct?
Mike's not.
I have plenty of intentions to go.
Yeah, I thought you were going. Oh, okay.
I'm, I'm, I'm gonna be in conference, that's what I was hoping to do.
Okay, I can, yeah, I can, I can be there, but I, 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 I think, I, I, and I'm only stating my opinion. Uh, I think just two of us should be there, if you feel that we're alright, we're sending more than, than whatever, but I'm, I, I think with the publicity that this thing is starting to gain.
If you guys would've let me know, I could've advertised that you may be there, but you won't be making any decisions, but I would, I, I wouldn't think that more than two of you should be there.
If Charlie and Ken, um, plan to go, I'm, I won't be going then, and, um, which is fine with me.
Do you wanna go?
Not that bad, um, so I'm happy not to. So let's just plan on you two going, and then we don't have to worry about it tomorrow.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine. Very good, alright, Charlie, anything else?
I have a question.
Okay, alright, moving on to Lisa?
I think Kelly had something to say.
Kelly?
Regarding the Heartland Express, uh, last time we had a district meeting, I believe, did somebody speak to you about the Heartland Express also? I mean, after you guys had our, after we had our breakaway sessions-
Yeah.
For the commissioners?
Yes.
Okay, so in our planning meeting for this upcoming one, they were talking about having somebody there again. But I also asked that they speak to all of us before they break away to you guys, just so we all know what's going on? I, I would be interested to know, in the, in the big group?
Before they do the breakaways.
Before the breakaways? Just, that, I, I wanted to verify that that's who's, who, I was thinking somebody spoke to you about it before.
I'll try and remind them of that.
Thank you, that's all I had.
Lisa?
Okay.
One more time.
I do have a rough draft of a resolution for animals in the building. I'll pass that out to you, and we can get some, you can tell me what questions you have, and I will be speaking to Phil this week as well. Regarding any information he has, but-
Has Melly mentioned in there at all?
What's that?
Has Melly mentioned in there at all?
She's bullet point number six. And she's not allowed, or is she your mascot?
Okay.
Okay, second thing I had, I did wanna let you know, after our joint committee meeting with the airport authority, that I did meet with Raul and Cheryl to discuss airport values and such, and, and who would take care of what, because we did a lot of discussion at that meeting regarding public spaces of which they, the discussion, as we understood it, there's a portion that's county will still be responsible for if it's public use. But when they're renting out the main terminal to Steve's Drum Shop, that part is, that's on them. So we were carving out the different areas, and Roma's would be on them, that's a different place they rent. They took eight of what they called the tea hangers off the policy, they got removed. That's some older buildings that ha, that are not air-conditioned or heated or anything, where-
That's those, that's all those hangers to the east, aren't they?
I've got a, I've got a photo, you guys, and I can point them to you, but, yeah, they're the older ones, they refer to, I believe, as the World War II hangers, or very old hangers that we did remove. And there's, and then we, they dressed with me like Valley, for instance, like Valley Airways has a hangar, but their lease doesn't end for another four years, so they cannot make any changes until the lease comes due, and-
How much longer?
Valley was four years, I mean, I could, and, gosh.
That's good.
What's that?
I was just trying to-
Yeah, that one was four, I mean, there, and then there's Wesco, theirs is in five, but there was one that was like a ten-year lease, so. Anyway, then I'm looking, I was gonna tell you my number of what I thought they would owe versus what we owe, and I don't like my numbers to share with that right now, but- Yeah, you'll wait on that one, but this is to happen next year, that they will take a portion of the premium, and we're, as I understand, we're, they're gonna reimburse us. So if it was the same as this year, or the total premium was like eighty-four thousand eight seventy-five, this number I feel pretty good on, thirty-one thousand would be on them.
Let's hope.
It's, it's a start, it's a start.
Okay, I agree. Alright.
One, let me, uh, add something on the, um, insurance with the airport, and that's that, um, at least the way I'm understanding it, again, we have an agreement that we are somewhat tied to unless we can negotiate a, some kind of beneficial settlement with it. But one of my questions is, um, if that doesn't go very far, can't we also, though, in providing the insurance, so to speak, um, change the terms on that a little bit, and I'm talking about deductibles and some things like that? It seems to me that, um, we probably get to set those.
We, and we do.
And not them.
If they triple net leased everything, if they're leasing out, they're living out a little problem.
And then the net effect of all of that would be that, um, to me, I think anyway, that would shift, um, part of the responsibility over to their side, if they're the ones responsible to get it fixed.
Well, they've actually cut back, she said, how many hangers did they take out altogether, eight?
Um, eight line items, yeah.
Were it eight hangers or-
I'm, I'm gonna tell you, it's eight hangers, eight, eight buildings, but they might rent five or six slots.
Those buildings, they just totally took them off there because, you know, if the worst thing could happen, if we got, those roofs are as old as the hangar.
Those are self-insured.
They've been, yeah, they've been hammered enough times, I mean, there's really nothing can happen that'll be fixed. But I think the only thing is they ought to have a, some, something in there that says if this airplane catches on fire, everyone thanks to a bird. But it's on each one of those people that rent, that they, you know, they're responsible, they don't sue the county, they're not having insurance on this.
Um, yeah, but didn't they, also, they were responsible for the contents of the buildings, we were not.
The owners are on tank.
The owners or the airport themselves were paying, paying their own contents.
Okay, I think you're right, but this, I think, contents, and this would be a liability, this would be a liability, because, uh, if I run into you, I mean, that's a liability, which is, they, they have liability, so, I can hope you, Mark, you know, I can, we don't have any way of doing it, if one of those planes, if somebody's working on one, and they fill the room full of gas, and they get, get one of those buildings burning, they scorched fifty thousand, a hundred thousand dollar airplane next door, like-
It depends on what they have in their lease agreement, I'm assuming.
Well, that's what I'm saying, they need to add some lease agreement that says there are no insurance on this building, you're on your own.
And, and it may be there, I don't know, I don't know what their lease agreement looks like.
I don't know.
I don't know.
They need to check those, and they may have to upgrade those right at the end to those, so, they need to kinda hold us harmless on anything they are.
We're still in negotiation, we're still working on it.
Yes, and having another meeting with them this week to discuss some more.
And that's something to bring up and, and check on, right?
And you have a meeting Wednesday, right?
No, next Thursday morning.
No, I think it's tomorrow.
It's tomorrow.
You have an airport authority. Okay.
Okay. Anything else, Lisa?
No, that's all I have.
Mark, you have anything?
I do not.
Okay. Robert, anything?
Yeah, I'd like to, for the IC director, he said, uh, he can be taking fundamentals of appraisal through I double A O one oh one course. So, uh, he started that this weekend on his own time, and he is very proud of it, but we have another individual that has shown interest in starting that, that training process.
Good.
Thank you, Steve.
And, and, and again, congratulations to you on passing your test, the first time. First, first time out, good for you. Alright.
Thanks for stepping up and doing it, Steve.
Yeah, thank you, Steve. Alright, Heather? Okay.
Fourth.
Fourth. The fifth is our auction. Okay, Jean? Okay. Steve, anything else? Okay. Okay, very good. Kelly, do you have anything else?
Nothing else, just the dates.
Okay, I think we've discussed legislation, I'd entertain a motion to move into executive session to discuss personnel. Uh, in that session, it will be the board, uh, Lisa, and Jean, and Robert, I believe, right? Is that correct? I get everybody? Okay, entertain the motion, please.
I move that we move into executive session with the aforementioned personnel.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Record your votes. Okay, we'll move into executive session at six o'clock, is what I have on my clock. Okay, we'll move into executive session at six o'clock, is what I have on my clock. Okay?
And then, are you guys gonna call Charlie back?
Yeah, we can, we can get him on the.
Yeah, I got, I suppose, I have the phones in there, but no, we don't.
Oh, these folks. I almost got it and gave it to you. I put this here.
Well, Sarah, we'll see you later.
Hey, have fun.
Yeah. Are you? Long day for you.
No, oh.
I wanna talk to you.
How much was our?
It's wrong, didn't get. Uh-oh, let's see, let's go back. There, goes here, goes here, goes there, alright.
Okay, uh, we are back in regular session at six fifty-four.
Roll call?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Razig?
Yes.
Blue?
Yes.
Any decisions?
No decisions were made. We're adjourned.